But I'm just visioning.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. This time, I will open the meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board for March 12th, For those of you who haven't seen the agenda or would like one, there are some here for your use. Maybe you could just pass those around back there? First item on the agenda are the minutes of March 5th. Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table the minutes. I haven't finished the review from everybody yet.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval not required. Mr. Curry.
Mr. Chairman, I received a letter from the applicant today through their engineer, and I would ask the board to wait table this action until your next meeting.
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I should have mentioned that that was an approval not required by the Woodbrier Senior Living LLC. The next item on the agenda is continuation of a public hearing.
Mr. Curry. Mr. Chairman, I have a letter from a lawyer for the applicant for your, for the board's consideration tonight.
Thank you. This letter is from Attorney Laura Moynihan dated March 11th, 2013, to Ralph Herbst, Chairman and the Planning Board regarding the proposed CVS and Cooperative Bank of Cape Cod, Worcester Court, and Davis Straits Falmouth Special Permit and Site Plan Review Applications. Dear Mr. Herbst, this letter is to request a continuance of the hearing before the Planning Board on the above referenced matter from March 12th, 2013, to April 2nd, 2013. The applicant is requesting the continuance to allow for additional time to finalize site detailed changes after consultation with the Planning Board staff. Thank you. Sincerely, Laura Moynihan. To continue the hearing, I need a motion.
I move that we continue the hearing per request of the applicant to April 2nd, 7:00 Town Hall Selecton's meeting.
Do I have a second? Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I apologize to anyone who is here for that hearing. That letter was dated the 11th, I believe, which was yesterday.
Yes.
And so, if you came for that hearing, for the continuation of that hearing, then you feel free, feel free to leave the meeting tonight unless you care to stay for the remainder of our agenda. The next item on our agenda is a discussion. Steven Hadad, applicant. Mr. Secretary.
The applicant, Steven Hadad, from, the location is 681 West Falmouth Highway, map 2417004. The proposal is a site plan review to, to move and remodel existing home and construct three duplex condominium structures with associated parking, draining, and landscaping on 1.19 acres. The published dates were February 22nd and March 5th, and the notices were sent by mail to the abutters.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue the hearing. Is there someone here for the applicant?
For the record, my name is Tom Bunker with BSS Design, representing the applicant, Steven Hadad, who's here with us also. We prepared these plans for Mr. Hadad to survey the property and prepare the site plan and go over the existing additions plan, which you have on the easel here. There are two structures on the property, a house toward the front of the property and a barn, which is currently an antique shop, commercial use in the residential zone. The zoning district, there is a 25-foot public use zoning district across the front, 100-foot commercial business district.
Public use back.
And the rear of the property is a residential. In addition, the front of the property, 150 feet back from the pavement, is in the West Falmouth Historic District. Currently, the, there is 10.2% lot coverage on this, and both of the structures are non-conforming as to location. The barn in the back is non-conforming as to location and the height of an accessory structure and the use being commercial. Point out that 53,000, 51,884 square feet, which is 1.19 acres. Density allowed, six units per acre, it'd be 7.2 units. What we have on here is seven units. The existing house is one dwelling unit now, and it'll remain so. It'll be, it's to be moved approximately 25 feet north. I have an outline of where it is now. It's moving north toward the north property line. And it'll be a paved driveway going in the middle of the property. Total length of the driveway is 231 feet from the edge of the pavement to the back of the driveway. As you can see, there are four structures. It'll be the one existing structure plus three two-bedroom, three two-unit condominium buildings. Each unit has three bedrooms. Each building, each unit therefore, has one garage, so there's one parking space in the garage, one parking space for each unit in the driveway outside of the garage. The driveway end is 230 feet long and 20 feet wide, and we just got a referral from the fire department. You don't have that yet. We have some copies here. We made a change to it to add an emergency. It'll be the reinforced turf type surface in this location. The fire department wanted a turnaround for an emergency vehicle. This turf will be 30 feet deep, 20 feet wide, actually a little bit wider, 30 feet wide at the edge of the pavement, so they can turn their, their, not their full ladder truck, which we don't expect to need here, but their other emergency vehicles can turn in there. The overall lot coverage here is 25%. Or the lot coverage by structures, 25%. The overall by structures and parking is 35.9%. Utility plan in brief. We have town water, obviously Long River 28A. There's gas, we have gas heat, electric service. The fire department also wanted a fire hydrant installed on this side of the road, so make one of those plans there on the SSDS, which is Subsurface Sewerage Disposal System and Utility Plan. It shows a fire hydrant at the entrance on the north corner, north side of the entrance to this property. And the four water services will be tapped off of the main, which serves the fire hydrant, rather than, rather than having the other openings across Route 28A at the north and the south ends of the site. There will be one common septic system here. Each, each building has a separate septic tank, which will flow into the leaching field as shown on the site, which meets Title V requirements. And the last sheet I have here, creating and drainage, there's a referral back from the engineering department. They've reviewed the drainage plan, trying to meet the requirements. Basically, all the, all the drain water will stay on the site. There's two catch basins, just not at the private side of the street line of Route 28A. They'll catch all of the runoff from the front lawn area and the driveways, and also all the downspouts from the buildings will be captured and put into infiltrators on the site around the buildings. The existing building, when it's being moved, will be set in a similar, the same elevation and a similar configuration as it is now to keep the, the look that it has now, the same setback from the street. The building on the, the other front building on the south side of the entrance will be a little bit lower than, 497, yeah, a little bit lower than the old building, so that their roof height will not overpower the old building because the site slopes up toward the back. The other two rear buildings are slightly taller than the front buildings, but none of the height, none of their roof heights exceed the 35 feet. Actually, the largest, the highest one is 28.3 feet, so they're almost seven feet shorter than what is allowed by zoning. You have a landscape plan here also? It's generally shown on the layout plan, but it's colored up and drawn a little better by a landscape designer. Basically, there are a lot of specimen trees on the property. I hope to save as many of them as possible and move to the appropriate locations. There are the old farmer's stone walls along parts of Route 28A, and that's actually part along here is old, old stone wall. Those will be filled up a little bit, approved as, you know, like the old stone wall, and across the front here, just a short stone wall, and then a short private hedge across the front also, as you would find in an old house or a farmyard. Other than that, there's some, some street trees and everything, but, and some of the larger trees across the front here will be left, but it will not be so heavily planted as to block visibility in from Route 28A. That is the proposal. I'll take questions now.
Any initial questions from the board?
No questions.
Okay, Paul?
As I look at the place water service, you have several septic tanks, but one common drain field.
Yes.
And that's in the roadway.
Yes.
And the septic system on the south side is below the, the realized term.
Yes. Each 20 septic tanks.
And the second question I have is, this appears to be a retaining wall on the, on the corner here. Is that what that is?
Yes, yes, there's a retaining wall there. It's built a little bit into the hill to keep the house lower.
There's quite a few contours in that area.
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we go any farther, I just, I overlooked the fact that we have a site plan staff report, and are there any comments from the staff at this time?
I think there are, yes. I was just wanting to inform the board.
As you know, I'm Marley McCollum, the Assistant Town Planner. A couple items I want to call your attention to on staff report. As Mr. Bunker mentioned, this is a split zone lot, so one item here that I'm going to ask you to change is on the lot coverage. We'd like a little bit more time to do some further research onto whether or not the business district lot coverage or the residential district lot coverage will govern the site, so we want to take some time to go through some of the board's past decisions on split zoned lots. So I had originally said that was a closed issue, but I would like to be able to amend that to be open. I had mentioned that we needed a proposal for the landscaping plan and the traffic mitigation. We have received the landscaping plan, so you can refer to the copy on the table for you. We have not yet received, excuse me, proposal for traffic mitigation under bylaw. The parking is adequate as described for 14 total spaces for the seven units. I just want to remind you that this will be a curb cut opening from the Mass DOT, so this is not going to be one. That's going to be subject to local review with the Engineering Division. Mr. Bunker has addressed the issue with the turning of the emergency equipment by the fire department, so that's something for you to discuss on, on whether you think the grass pavers will work. You have used that treatment in the past. The site is within the West Falmouth Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District, and since a site plan review is required, you'll need to discuss whether or not it's appropriate to require denitrification system for, instead of a standard Title V system. Excuse me. Engineering has reviewed the drainage and the design is adequate to meet our standards, so that's not an item that we're worried about. The proposal was reviewed on last Tuesday, March 5th, at the Historic District Commission. That no final action has been taken by that board yet, so that is still under review. The project will be before the Zoning Board of Appeals on March 21st. I have two notes here about both on the Board of Appeals line and under the additional comments about a use variance. The barn is subject to a use variance that will become important when you speak about whether or not you send a zoning referral at a later date. There's a copy of the building commissioner's referral in your file for you, so you can take a look at that and see what he has to say. And then when we bring this back to you for your referral, that's when we'll talk about the zoning issues on the residentially zoned part of the lot. And the project was not sent to the Design Review Committee, excuse me, the Design Review Committee because their review is superseded by the Historic Districts Commission. So that's what I have for you for the staff report right now.
Thank you, Marley. Okay, so then we'll continue with questions from the board of the applicant. I have one, one question, Mr. Bunker, since you already brought it up. The pavers that are used for the turnaround for the ambulance?
Yes.
That is, that is grass covered with a mesh, is it? Or what is that? What is that? What is, how do you describe that?
It is, it's sort of like plastic, it's like PVC cylinders, short, like two inch high cylinders held together. It's kind of like a tray you get in the nursery, holding all these cylinders together on a large mat, and then that's laid down on the subgrade, like a, you know, compacted subgrade as you were building a road almost, and then infill with sandy loam. So that, that plastic material supports and distributes the weight of, of the vehicles. It was approved at several places. The last one that we did was at the Schoolhouse Green Apartments next to the Stop &amp; Shop as the fire lane.
And then is grass planted in those cylinders?
Yes, yes, grass.
Okay, so my, my question is, plowing that and framing it up from snow is not an issue?
The only time it becomes an issue is, it could become an issue if you hit the edge of it. I know that Woodswell, so it's not Woodswell, it's around Woodswell Road, the SEA, next to it, they have that, they have a version that's called gravel pave. And when they pave their, plow their paved driveway, they sometimes catch an edge of that and it lifts it up, but if you're actually pushing already on the surface, it doesn't lift it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions from the applicant on, from the planning board? Site plan review. Jim?
Just a question on how they came up with the 25% lot coverage that you're applying for. You blending too different to?
That's the overall, I mean, that's on the entire parcel. It's 25%. We don't have it broken out to what, what the coverage is on the business and what the coverage is on the residential, but it's, overall, it's an average of 25% coverage.
How does a lot break up? Is it 50/50?
I didn't do that calculation.
That's historic, I don't know the zoning.
It's, well, there's 125 feet of public use and business, and it's about 50/50.
Okay. And Marley's going to be doing some research on that particular issue. Okay, other questions from the board? Yes, Doug?
Will you be considering the denitrification septic as you're in the coastal pond overlay?
I'll be considering, but I'd say that the way we read the zoning, it actually doesn't, we're in the coastal pond overlay district, but the way I read the, was it 24073 or something? It's not actually, doesn't trigger the requirement for, for it. So not, it's not a, it's not a, we don't think this is a business development. It's not five acres or five lots of larger, and it's not elderly housing and those. Let's say when there's a site plan review is filed under section, under Article 32, which is elderly housing. So, I mean, we actually don't fall under any of those categories. If push comes to shove, you know, we'll keep it open.
I can answer questions from the board. Before we go any farther, I'd just like to explain the planning board's role in this application to, to the folks that are attending tonight in the audience. A special permit is required in this situation because there's multi-family, multi-family use in a business district, so that's one of the reasons that there's special permit is required. If you would look at the plot plan, the front half is zoned business and the back end, back end is zoned residential. So this is a bit of a tricky situation for the planning board to consider. It's not, not your normal situation. I'd also like to remind you that the Historic District Commission has governing, control over the front 100 feet of this lot, which, which would cover the existing building and the, one of the proposed buildings. And so, they will be meeting on March 21st. I'm sorry, no, no, the Historic District is meeting?
April 2nd.
I'm sorry, April 2nd. I, I'm sorry, it's the Board of Appeals is on March 21st, April 2nd. So that would be a meeting that I'm sure any of you who are interested in this proposal would want to attend, along with the Board of Appeals meeting. The role of the, of the planning board here is to deal with the site. And as far as the proposed demolition of the barn in the, in the back part of the, of the property, that would require a permit from the Building Department to demolish that. There is a demolition bylaw that can delay demolition, but I believe it has to be in one of the historic districts. Am I right on that?
It has to be in the book at the clerk's desk as a recorded, recorded structure. There's a list of structures.
Historic structure, I'm sorry, okay. And so I don't know whether that, that would be applicable here or not.
It wouldn't be germane to the board's review tonight.
Right.
It's another board. It'd be the Historic Goal Commission would be assigned.
But that, just, just so that you know, that the planning board doesn't deal with the demolition of that, of that structure. Let me see here. I think that's all. And then I just wanted to read to you what our bylaw says about site plan reviews. It says, "The purpose of the site plan review is to ensure the design and layout of certain developments permitted as a matter of right or by special permit, which constitute suitable development and will not result in a detriment to the neighborhood or the environment." And then it refers, refers us to several other articles in, in our bylaw. One deals with parking, which Mr. Bunker has alluded to. There were 14 of these spaces. There was another one, there's another article that, that deals with performance standards such as nuisances and safety issues. And then the, the last one has to do with landscape, and we received a landscape plan. So the applicability of a site plan review for us is if, if there's 1,000 square feet or more being proposed, or, and/or five or more parking spaces. So both of those situations apply here, so that's why we are considering a site plan review for this, for this project. At this, so if everyone understands that, and if you have comments, and we will take comments from the public, if everyone understands what our role is here and what the role of the Zoning Board of Appeals is and the role of the, of the Historic District. Also, the fact that the Design Review Committee will not be involved in this because the Historic District Commission takes precedent over that. Design review would only be Design review would only be appropriate if it was a proposal outside of the Historic District. So if I hear, I have no other questions or comments. Pat?
Yeah, it took me a while to really to get to this point, saying, Tom, can you put some guest parking here? There are two parking spaces per unit, but most people today, especially with three-bedroom units, they have at least two cars. And so that's going to either encourage people parking along the side of the drive.
We can.
I know you meet the requirements, but...
Okay. Guest parking. All right. Other comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, then. At this time, we would encourage and solicit comments from the public. If you would be kind enough to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the benefit of the public that is viewing the proceedings and for our benefit, and we'll take those comments at this time.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Wayand. I'm a resident of West Falmouth.
The last name?
Wayand, W-E-Y-A-N-D.
W-E-Y-A-N-D. Thank you.
My husband and I have owned three historic homes so far and would love to own another one, so we're aficionados. I'm here speaking respectfully back to you. I would like to play back the phrase that Mr. Erbs just used about making sure that this is not a detriment to the community. That's an extraordinarily important part of why our neighbors are out tonight. And also, I'd like to play back what is on the webpage for the Planning Committee, which is that you are supposed to be planning in the best interest of the town. So in terms of setting the tone tonight, I want to make sure that you understand that we're here because we care deeply about the village and the historic character of the village, which we feel is being eroded by a series of developments. This is not personal directed at Mr. Haddad. This is one of several. What makes this property, I think, a catalyst for action inside the West Falmouth residents' community is the fact that this is a particularly important historical asset in our village. If you are not familiar with it, it is a highlight of this book. And I say it not entirely facetiously, that the next edition of this book could be described as condo row if we're not careful. This, I draw your attention to pages, this is called Between the Forest and the Bay, for those of you not familiar with it. Pages 92 and 93 speak to this. And I would ask you to think about this, please, not as a series of objects which are being placed on a site plan. The point that this particular book makes is that this property, and I ask you to think of it holistically, represents a picture of West Falmouth in the early 1800s. So it is the combination of the house plus the barn plus its sighting and where it is on the street, its fence, everything. Together, that depicts an integrated picture of what it was like, and we're losing that piece of history. So that's what we're here about tonight. We're trying, we're trying to draw your attention to that. Second of all, just to tell you my self-interest in this, and I'm only here representing a tremendous amount of effort, the town of Falmouth was designated, a White House designation, and we became the first town on Cape Cod to be a Preserve America community. And in our application, we asserted that we have seven vibrant historical districts. So this identity is an umbrella under which we should all be acting, not just the Planning Committee, the Board, not just the Historic District Commission, not any single body. We should all be caring about the fact that this identity is important, not because we simply got it from the White House, but let me just make the link that we see between historical preservation is not just about retaining the value to the homeowner, it brings economic viability into our town. We get a tremendous number of visitors who seek to come here every year to visit us because we have seven historic districts. So chipping away at them on a project-by-project basis and leaving behind no character is going to eventually hurt the economic viability of the town of Falmouth. It's something we care about. And last, what I would like to do, because I want, I'm sure you want everybody to be sure, is one person who was not able to be here tonight sent an email to me, and I'd just like to move, tell you little bits of it if I may, because I did not get into your path on time. This person is out of the country at the moment. This property is clearly part of Falmouth and in particular, West Falmouth historical heritage. Once properties like this are moved and surrounded by modern buildings, that heritage is lost, not only for generations now living, but for all future generations. It seems to me that the town of Falmouth and the owners of such historical properties, in effect, hold this type of property on trust to be preserved and cared for, not only for themselves, but for future generations. The destruction of the property in its proper context, that's what we're talking about, should only be contemplated as a last resort in the event that that's, such a property cannot be properly preserved. I hope that the town of Falmouth will consider carefully whether this property, in its context, really does not require the protection of the town against such destruction. Again, here, it is fascinating, this talking about 28A. I believe that 28A is our 6A. You know, if you look at Mid-Cape and the careful and studious zoning that they have done there, it is an absolute pleasure to drive along there. And 28A is a like asset for the town of Falmouth. It is fascinating to compare and contrast the properties, their styles and details, their position in relationship to the highway and in relation to their neighbors. One can imagine the relationships between neighbors by looking at the way they presented their properties to the world and each other. By chipping away at that integral experience, we all lose a true sense of the inhabitants and the place over time and its context. Losing a property of this stature and importance in its proper context would, in my view, be particularly damaging to that experience, and that loss would be irreparable. One can imagine in 50 or 100 years' times, the inhabitants of Falmouth looking at old photos or films and wondering why the town allowed such old and iconic properties along 28A to be surrounded and swamped by modern condos. Of course, I understand there are arguments of building small new houses and condos near to the seaside of the Cape. I do not understand why it is necessary to buy, build such properties on the site of an historic property in one of the prettiest historic villages on the Cape. The fact that West Falmouth has remained relatively unscathed by unattractive development continues to be a reason visitors come to Falmouth and to West Falmouth in particular. If West Falmouth becomes a village with too many unhistoric and/or undistinguished properties and condos and too many cars, both being driven and parked in consequence, people will go elsewhere. Thus, the short-term gains of a few condos is likely to result in a long-term loss to the prosperity and the village of the town. Last but not least, one comment on process. Because of a 1975 variance that the town enacted, there isn't the same kind of notice that goes out at this stage to the planning, from the Planning Board to abutters and neighbors. And as a consequence, the first step in what is part of a review of an historic property is not transparent. So that's why protests show up tonight instead of earlier, because that happened. It's gone, and this is our first opportunity to be with you and to register our protest. Any questions of me?
No, we, no, thank you, though.
Thank you.
At this time, it might be appropriate for me to read a letter, if I can find it. Yeah, that's the one I'm looking for. Oh, I have, I have it right here. Thank you. I have a letter from Aladi Ogor, who's the Building Commissioner, to Sarai Budro, who's the Administrator of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we have a copy of this regarding the 681 West Falmouth Highway special permit application. Yes?
So it's, this is an opportunity for the public. I thought, Mr. Chairman, that's just an internal memorandum from the Building Commissioner to the zoning.
Okay.
That we'll be discussing with the board.
All right. I thought we were copied on this, but we really weren't copied really. This is to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it references the special permit and also the variance, so you folks will want to get a copy of this before you attend the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm sorry, I apologize. I won't read it because it was not addressed to us, but it is for our consideration when we deliberate in the future. So further comments from the public. Mr. Haddad, if you could wait just one moment, see if there's any other people. And, yes, sir.
My name is Milt Williamson. I live at 658 West Falmouth Highway. I live in West Falmouth, roots that go back several generations. My mother was born and grew up in a now demolished historic house of the Italianate style just south of the West Falmouth Methodist Church. It was called the Bemis Kelly House, and is pictured in the book Between the Forest and the Bay. Here's that book again, as are all the other historic houses along Route 28A, including the house and property that is being discussed here tonight. In recent years, condominium developments have and are being built to the north, south, and east of where I live. I have no significant issue with the architectural styles of the structures. My concern and disgust is with the alien densities of the projects. This is eroding and destroying the rural character of West Falmouth Village as we have known it. The proposed Haddad project at 681 West Falmouth Highway within sight of my property is particularly disturbing because it will continue with this erosion, only this time involving a gem of a historical setting. Located at this setting is the historic Bowerman and Eldred House and Red Barn. This is a prime example of late 18th century and 1830 blend of federal period architecture, which is documented and written up in several books of Falmouth history. A couple of years ago, Falmouth was honored to be chosen a Preserve America community. Two of these sites are located in the West Falmouth Village on Route 28A. These two sites, which contribute so much to the character of the village, are the West Falmouth Methodist Church and the West Falmouth Library, as does the house we are discussing tonight. Let's live up to that Preserve America mission, and please give this development proposal due diligence in light of what will be lost and gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Martha Ross, Little Island Road in West Falmouth. Sue Moran, the president of the West Falmouth Village Association, is sick and couldn't be here, and she asked that I read the letter that you have, but that was sent to the Falmouth Historic District Committee Chairman, Mr. Haddad. Dear Mr. Haddad, I'm writing to you as president of the West Falmouth Village Association, a nonprofit civic association with more than 300 members. We are a very active association dedicated to promotion of the best interests of the village of West Falmouth. Our members consist of a broad variety of permanent and summer residences and businesses located in West Falmouth. Last week, it came to our attention that a meeting on March 5th, 2013, Historic Commission considered an application for a certificate of appropriateness with respect to the property located at 681 West Falmouth Highway. That property is an important historical asset and is central to the West Falmouth Historic District. The property itself and the improvements to that property play an important role in the history of West Falmouth and is an iconic part of the Historic District. I have been contacted by many of our members who have expressed concern about any disruption of this historic property. They are particularly concerned that, as we understand it, the commission has been asked to consider not only a substantial renovation of the property, but the relocation of historic buildings and a disruption of the configuration of that property. Several members of our organization have pointed out that the mission statement of the commission is to preserve the historical character of the buildings and their settings in historic districts. We are concerned that the proposed plan for this property jeopardizes both the historical character of both of the buildings and their settings on this property. The Board of Directors of our association have reached no final position on this, but we believe the consideration of this proposal must receive a full public airing. Falmouth is distinguished for promoting public participation. Because of the absence of any advance public notice regarding this proposal, there was no public participation, and on behalf of our association, I urge you to defer any action with respect to this request and to call a public meeting with notice to abutters and residents in West Falmouth, at which all interested parties can be heard. We understand that this matter is calendared for consideration by the Planning Board and by the Board of Appeals. However, there is clearly no emergency with respect to this, and we believe that the town would be well-served by the commission's further consideration of this matter at an early date so that merits of this proposal could be fully aired. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to hearing from you as soon as possible regarding this. I just want to have that in the minutes, that's...
Thank you.
Is there a question?
Yes, Jim.
This is for our staff. I'm a little confused on the issues we're discussing, and I don't, I know these people need a chance to speak, but this is our Planning Board, and during site review, and we're into an area that's Historic District, and I think if we continue to do this, we're going down the wrong path.
We're, you're stuck behind a rock and a hard place. Your citizens want to give you some comments, but you don't have any jurisdiction, is correct. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I can...
We can listen, but we can't do anything.
You can listen, correct. You can take the letter that's been placed on the record tonight and submit, transmit it out to the Districts Commission, but your jurisdiction is limited, correct. And just in fairness to the public, they should know that, that the Planning Board is looking under this, essentially at the site planning details. And although your concerns are legitimate, you're going to have to repeat yourselves again at another meeting with the Board of Appeals regards density issues we heard here, and the other commission with regards to the architecture and historical significance. This board will be acting outside its jurisdiction given to it by town meeting, whether they like it or not. And they don't, I think it's fair to let you know that they would be doing that if they took into consideration the comments they've heard here so far tonight.
Brian, would you, for the benefit of all of us, just review the public notices that are sent forth in, for the Planning Board when we look site plan review, for the, for the Zoning Board of Appeals? the Zoning Board of Appeals, and for the Historic District Commission? Maybe I, I'm sorry, I should have asked you this before, but I've got a feeling you got it right up here.
When I don't know, I make up.
Okay. Well, we'll rely on Marlene if you don't.
Because the board heard this tonight with regards to certain issues, regards to transparency and de-process, the Board of Appeals actually holds a public hearing under the zoning bylaw, it's a state law. Notice goes out to a butters. You have party and interest standing. In other words, if the decision of the Board of Appeals is appealable to the Superior Court. The Planning Board is holding a public meeting. It's actually not issuing any permits. It's, it's conducting a review, hence the term site plan review. It has no standing in a court. It's simply administrative proceeding. It's a letter that goes to the Building Commission. But our town meeting has decided that, out of a courtesy to neighbors, they've been built into the local bylaw under site plan review. We'll put a notice in the paper. We'll send a regular mail to the people who live nearby, just to let them know the board's discussing this tonight. And if they have some comments with the board's consideration in regards to site planning issues like parking and lighting and landscaping, the board will certainly hear it. Up until 1975, the Planning Board was the Architectural Review Board. In 1975, the town meeting voted a petition to the General Court to enact special legislation, not a general statute, but special legislation that created the Historic Districts Commission. And in 19, and they're a board of separate standing. They have no association with the Planning Board. They have no association with the Zoning Board. They have their own special act that town meeting voted, but the legislature approved and has been going on here now for what, 40, almost 38 years? Town meeting didn't build into that special legislation, nor did the legislature require notice to a butters because the districts are so small. So they haven't, there is no notice provision in this special legislation. They're talking about perhaps introducing that, but that, but my understanding, there's no deacted notice and there's no procedural deprocess violation with regards to what the District's Commission has been doing. So that's the tier, the level of, no, no, the level of notice because you're in a small district. An administrative review that has no statutory issues or standing. And a special permit of the zoning board that actually is a permit that gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds and their decision is appealable to a court of competence or jurisdiction. How'd I do?
I'd give you an A.
That's why this board can only do certain things that town meeting has authorized it to do. Looking at site, site design issues. It has no competent jurisdiction with regards to demolition of the building. Town meeting has given that to the Historic Commission. It has no say over the architecture of the buildings. Town meeting has given that to the District's Commission, nor does it have any say over the density or the number of units. Town meeting has given that special permit powers to the Zoning Board. Planning Board has more planning authority, but only town meeting can authorize their authorities. And the zoning that's been in this area, has been in this area since, I think, 1926.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I, I'm going to continue hearing from the public, and then Mr. Hadad wants to speak, and then the Planning Board, we can, we'll speak again. So other comments from the public? Seeing none and hearing none, Mr. Hadad, I know you wanted to speak.
My name is Steve Hadad, and I am a member of the public. I live in West Falmouth, and as most of you know, my neighbor's here. I most, and I, I would ask that the board give me an opportunity here over the next several minutes to discuss some issues that really aren't planning board issues because the previous two speakers got up here and spoke about Historic District issues. So I'd just like to address some of the, the false statements that are, that are out there in the community. First and foremost, I have, I live here in West Falmouth. I do care about the village. I have done nothing wrong. I have followed the plans set up by the town, by the town meeting members as to how to develop property. I was approached about this property being for sale. Robert Wayan, who spoke first, her husband's a real estate agent. They live in the condominiums next door. He brought two developers to the same property to sell it for condominiums and apartments. So they're experts at condos. So, so, so let me finish, please.
Mr. Hadad, excuse me for just one second. We really can't deal with personalities here.
That'll be my last personality comment.
We, we need, we need to stay.
Correct.
If at all possible, with planning board issues, which, which is what I discussed earlier.
I went to the Historic District meeting. I, I filed all the paperwork to go to the Historic District meeting. There were, there was another hearing before me about School Street. There were 25 people from Woods Hole who showed up at that meeting. My meeting, there was one person. And the one person who showed up happened to have her great-great-grandfather grew up in the house. And she did not object to anything that I was doing. In fact, the Historic District spent two hours talking about views and vistas.
Mr. Chairman, it's third-party presidential hearsay.
But, but, but let, please.
Well, Mr. Hadad, you really have to stay on this issue.
I'm going to stay, I'm going to stay on course.
And please, no personal.
I had, I had a 25-minute presentation before the Historic District. My house, or this house that I'm considering purchasing, first of all, my efforts will preserve the house. This house sits on, on a rubble foundation, six inches off the dirt, number one. Number two, this house, for those who aren't familiar with the demolition delay bylaw, this house is not protected. This house can be torn down immediately without the six-month delay. It is not a protected house in the district. That house is going to survive because I'm going to make an effort to give it some life. And if it's not me here before you tonight, this could be somebody else come before you and say, you know what? I don't care about the house. I don't care about the village. I'm just going to tear it down. The, but, but. I'm a member of the public. I've listened to these other people talk about the Historic District. I would like to address some of their issues.
I think it's best that you address their issues in front of the Historic District Commission.
I, I agree. I, I agree. But I sat here for the last 20 minutes and allowed someone to read a letter about historic issues, and I sat here and let someone else read a letter about historic issues, and now I can't talk about historic issues.
You can, it, it, it doesn't influence us.
I, and I'm not trying to.
It's not appropriate here, but I'm.
I'll, I'll end it there. I'll end it there for the sake of not wasting your time, but please.
Not wasting our time.
I am wasting your time by talking about historic issues, as the last speakers were, so I'll end it there.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Now, any more comments from the public? Okay. Comments from the Planning Board?
Yes, I thought Brian made it very clear. We entertained the testimony from the neighbors of this property solely as a courtesy, having no effect at all, permissible effect at all, on our decision, which is not based on aesthetics or historical characteristics, which has purely got to be based upon issues such as the adequacy of the site for the proposed use, purely functional issues that we address. It was not necessary for, for these folks to address those other concerns to us because we don't hear them. Historic District Commission will hear them. The Zoning Board will hear them. But we nonetheless, as Brian said, heard these comments solely as a courtesy. Mr. Hadad, based on that, you've already won the fight here because you can't lose. So, thank you.
Okay. Other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Yes, Pat?
Yeah, I'm puzzled because I'm comparing the planting diagram of the house after it's been moved with the other drawing, and they're different. The planting diagram shows a greater incision into the house than does. So I don't know which is right.
We received notice from the Planning Department today with respect to the fire department's recommendations or concerns. And one of those concerns was if an ambulance had to come up into the driveway, is there sufficient turning radius? I've listened to some of the comments from, from some of the neighbors who I've shared my plans with, they were concerned about wide driveways. And one of the alternatives to address aesthetics and abilities to turn is the, is the Geo grids that.
That's not what I'm talking about.
So on that plan that you see cutting in.
No, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about after you move the original house. Look at this versus this. One of the things we look at here is landscaping. Well, this unit is considerably different from this unit that's pictured. And I don't know which is correct. This shows plantings up here.
This is correct.
This is correct. Okay.
Okay. Well, we can discuss this more tonight, or we can discuss it at a future date. I think there's a lot of information we still need.
Right. We're going to try to clarify some.
Excuse me, Brian. Yes, ma'am? Please.
I'm Perry Coppola from 40 Eric Claussen Lane in West Falmouth. And my concern is with your site plan review, with seven units with three bedrooms for each unit, what does that mean for the pollution problems that we're having in West Falmouth Harbor already? And that was it. So just wanted to take that into consideration.
You're talking about the, whether or not the denitrification system would be appropriate here?
Yeah, or even if that's just too many bedrooms to have so close to West Falmouth Harbor, we're having a lot of problems in the harbor.
Right.
And I know, I have almost an acre of land, and I'm only allowed to have three bedrooms, and I'm not allowed to have a bigger septic system.
Right.
So how can you have three times seven bedrooms?
You're talking about nitrogen.
On one acre.
Nitrogen.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that has something to do with what you guys are responsible for.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask your name again, please?
I'm sorry, it's Perry Coppola, COO of the oil.
Rich is looking for you?
Yeah. Yes, Rich?
That's also a question for the ZBA on the variance, and an important one, because they are the ones that are going to be dealing with issues of density of questing a variance for this type of development.
Okay.
On that point, our only input, if we wanted to, if I understand it completely, would be a referral to the ZBA on those issues, that we would discuss amongst ourselves and decide if we wanted to do that. Once we understand exactly what's going on between the two different zoning things, we're not ready to do that yet, right?
We are not.
Okay.
So then I think what we should do is continue our, our discussion on this at a future date.
Right.
And we would need to know what, what's on our agenda availability for this?
We're probably, we're probably looking at April 2nd.
Okay. April 2nd.
But that's, that issue isn't done yet, but.
Okay.
We'll have to discuss that with you, Mr. Chairman.
Pat?
It was suggested that perhaps we ought to request that the letter that was presented to us tonight from the West Falmouth Group be sent on.
I have a copy.
You do? Okay. Great. The other question I have is because the ZBA is hearing this on March 21st, should we request that they keep their hearing? I assume they would, keep their hearing open until we give our referral on it?
You, they can, they take action until such time as you issue your plan review.
So it stays open until we're done?
I understand that, but I am also hearing that maybe we want to make a referral to them, which.
We don't review the plan until we make a referral. Then we control the time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you're, you're talking about under that 35, is there a 35 thing? If the board would like to make a motion to that effect, I'll transmit it to the board.
35, what would you recommend?
If you like them to keep their hearing open for your comments regards to zoning issues from their hearing slated for the 21st. That's the board's wish. We need to vote it, and I'll make sure the board appeals. Fine, sir. I'll give them a letter.
Okay.
Okay.
I will so move.
I'll second it. Would you, would you restate the motion?
Okay, I move that we, we request that the ZBA keep their hearing open until 6:00 as we provide them with not only our site plan review, but our referral.
I second that.
So there would be a letter to them from us, and I'll sign it. Okay. Discussion on that?
Not on that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Now, further comments?
Ralph to Brian. When can we expect the traffic mitigation proposal?
I'll, I'll discuss that with the applicant between now and your next meeting. But you'll have some sort of decision.
Further comments from the, from the. Okay, then. I think we've covered that, that agenda item, and we have another item on our agenda. And for those of you who are here for this particular meeting, if you would like to excuse yourselves now, kindly hold your comments until you're quite a ways down the hallway because we have to keep our door open. That's the open meeting law requirement.
Organized, but somebody got him holding around to exit.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think they missed the other one. I think they missed the other hearing. So they felt this was a public.
We're not trying to do that in conservation. They can't hear me.
Yeah, I know. Well, we did it as a courtesy.
I know, we're too nice.
Yeah.
But it kept going. That's why I wanted to pull the plug because I saw it going back and forth and back and forth. Yikes. That meeting's still open on the, Historic District isn't finished, right?
No, it hasn't finished yet.
So they can go back. That's where they need to go.
Yeah, yeah.
We should tell them the date.
I did tell them.
Historic District, yeah.
It's April 2nd.
April 2nd.
Okay. All right, we're going to continue then. The next item on the agenda is the Article 1. Article 1? I thought it was Article 2.
It's Article 2.
Yeah, well, the, the agenda says Article, Article 1. But it meant, I meant Article 2. Yeah, okay. So the next item on the agenda is discussion of Article 2 on the upcoming special town meeting. And as you recall, last meeting, we voted to have a contingent wording of, making our article contingent upon the article of our wind turbine bylaw in this, in the regular town meeting. And Brian has advised me that we probably need to change, change some of that to make it more appropriate for the town meeting. So Brian, would you review that with us?
So you'll have in your package a copy of the article as it will appear in the warrant. At your last meeting, you essentially made the motion, contingency motion. You read this explanation, the last paragraph, that, that was essentially your motion that you made back on the 5th. So I would ask the board to rescind your vote of the 5th. So that way we have a clean slate. I discussed with Ralph today, he would prefer that you vote to rescind. He would prefer that you vote to rescind. And then revote what you see here tonight, that your recommendation to town meeting would be that you will make your recommendation, or you make your motion on town meeting floor, and you substitute your explanation, which was essentially your motion last week. You'll have the same effect, but you really can't have a contingency motion based on something that happens at the other town meeting. So, this cleans up this little procedural issue here. I had mentioned at our meeting back on March the 5th that I thought it might be appropriate to make a recommendation on town meeting floor, and I gave it some more thought, and I think that's actually the way to go. So, I'd ask for two votes tonight, one to rescind your prior vote on the 5th, the other to adopt this as your motion for the special town meeting, or two, with the following explanation.
I see some questions from Brian. Pat, I believe you had made that motion, and so would you make the motion then to rescind?
Okay, I move that we rescind our vote of the prior meeting on Article 2, as far as our recommendation to town meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
What are the implications of rescinding the vote before? Are there any implications of that?
I can't think of any. We're just, we're changing what we did. We decided to change something that we voted previously, and I don't think there's any issues with that. Has anybody? Rich?
It's like when you're on your computer, and before you can put in a new program, you've got to clear the old program. That's all we do.
Well, it's not quite the same as it was, but-
But we've done it before.
Okay. All right, that's a good question, good valid question from somebody who's new to the board. I certainly don't remember. Okay, any further discussion on rescinding our motion from our last meeting, which was a contingency motion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Now, I need a new motion. Pat?
I move that our recommendation to town meeting be that the Planning Board will make its recommendation on town meeting floor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. All right, thank you.
And it goes to the printer, too?
Oh, wow.
Just in time.
Horseshoes and hair grenades.
The next item on the agenda is new business. Anything that someone wants brought up in the future, on our future agenda? Hearing none, correspondence? I don't think I have any correspondence. Okay, then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's adjourned. All right, the meeting's done.